Three, two, one.
Welcome, everybody, to the special meeting of the Rye Town Council on July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, bless this assemblage, grant us the wisdom to make every decision fair-minded in the best interest for all those residents. Amen.
Thank you. Hope, please call the roll.
Counselperson Jill Axelrod.
Here.
Counselperson Thomas Snardi.
Here.
Counselperson Randy Selyer.
Here.
I'm surprised.
And present, and accounted for.
And Counselperson Pamela Jaffe.
Definitely here, in a different spot.
And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Yes, I'm here, too. Our first item is a public hearing to authorize the submittal of two applications to Westchester County's Community Development Block Grant Program. One for the reconstruction of the Rye Town Park bathhouse retaining wall, and the other, the restoration of the sidewalk running along the park's promenade to bring it into conformity with the Americans with Disabilities Act. May I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Set.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we have with us, Debbie is on vacation. We have with us our administrative intern, Ruby Tower, who will tell us about the program and the applications. Ruby, floor is yours.
Hello, everyone. So I'm going to be discussing both project applications, first the retaining wall and then the sidewalk. So the first project is the retaining wall. I have the photos up here. The retaining wall is deteriorating and it's inadequate, failing, and has created unsafe conditions in the area surrounding the wall, which has forced us to set up safety fencing. The safety fencing is currently blocking a row of disabled parking spots, making the spaces unavailable to park, for park visitors with disabilities. And the proposed work for this project involves demolishing the existing wall and installing a new reinforced concrete wall.
Sure, go slow around the pictures, Ruby, just so everybody gets an idea, especially those who see this on TV or so why, why we need to do this work.
So it's an extensive amount of wall.
The wall that's going to go back up, is it going to be, do you know the, oh, okay.
Can I ask one more question before you move aside?
Okay.
I think we get the idea. Thank you.
And then next, this is the, our current anticipated budget for the wall. It comes to one hundred thirty seven thousand and forty eight dollars total. And the CDBG maximum amount is two hundred thousand dollars, but it requires a fifty fifty match regardless. And then the last document for this project is the site plan. So the retaining wall is at number one on this, on this segment.
Does it end at seven?
It ends at nine. It's, it goes around.
It goes around, okay.
Right.
And then for the, everyone stop looking at this.
Before we do that, okay, before, you were going to go on to the walk, okay, Tommy had a question about this.
With, with the wall construction, are we doing a block wall or poured concrete wall?
No, it's going to be, I believe it's poured concrete with reinforced concrete with a stucco covering to match.
To match what's there.
To match what's there, and obviously, this has, since every structure in the park is on both the United States and the New York State has Registered Historic Places, we have to get SHPO approval. State Historic Preservation Office to do it, which we've done, and we've already done the seeker on the, on the retaining wall.
So it's got to be basically what we see there is going to be similar?
That is correct.
Okay.
Pam?
Question, in that if the grant is two hundred, okay?
Yes.
And it's five forty eight, is the city of Rye going to come to the table as well?
Well, let me explain how this is working. It's a very good question because, as you know, this project is located at Rye Town Park. And the applicant for CDBG, and I'll get into other financing after. The applicant for CDBG has to be the town of Rye because the town is a member of the Westchester County Urban Consortium that is in charge of dispersing CDBG funds. Rye Town Park Commission is not, nor is the city of Rye, for whatever reason they chose not to be. So the applicant is the town of Rye. We have gotten CDBG funds for the park before to do the, the bathhouse exterior, to do the, the path, to do the ramps. We've gotten CDBG money for all of those things in one way or another. So this is more of the same. It's a fifty percent match, and as you can see, normally if it was four hundred thousand, we'd have to come up with two hundred thousand. Since it's more, we'd have to come up with more. But who is the we? Randy was joking with me earlier. The fact is, we have no less than five applications in to do this work. The CDBG is one of them. We are also applying to, through the CFA process, to New York State Parks, which is also a fifty fifty batch. We have requested a low cap grant from Senator Shelley Mayer's office, which we've requested two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from them. I'm not sure how much will be available, but we've requested that. We have already filed and are waiting for an answer with the United States Parks Department. I guess it's the Department of the Interior, but United States Park Service, they're the same people who gave us the grant for the African American Cemetery. They have a program called Restoring Our National Treasures, and we submitted an application last year on that program, which is also a fifty percent match program. And last but not least, we have requested money from our congressional representatives, both Senator Schumer and Senator Gillbrand, to also fund the project. So don't ask me what happens if we get all of that money. Obviously, we can only, we can only spend what it costs, but.
I will ask what happens if we get none of that money.
The, the other thing is, we, right now, we don't have any of the money. So the philosophy that we have followed is, we make the applications, we get the money. But some of the money that we requested is also, we can roll it into another project. For example, money that we've requested from CFA is both for the retaining wall and the promenade walk that Ruby will speak about momentarily. And if we don't, normally their grants are lump sum for both projects, so that we can probably shift it. We've done this before where we've gotten a grant that covers several projects, and then we establish what the priority is for the project. So that, that's basically the philosophy and how it works. What we're hoping for is that ultimately, we will not have to make a local match with taxpayer dollars for this project. That is what the goal is. Whether it will come to fruition, we will see. That answer, yes, Jill?
I just, I think for the sake of everyone watching, I mean, it's clear that the, the wall is in a state of decay, but why do we need it?
Well, because it's a historic structure, and they're not going to allow us to demolish it, for one thing.
Does it serve a functional?
And it does. If you look at the.
I think it's worth knowing, worth saying.
The functional purpose is, is that it's a retaining wall. At least the, the part near the bathhouse is. It retains the land, I don't know, do you have a, a picture of it? From the, I don't know if you have a picture that quite shows that.
That slopes down. I believe that slopes down.
Uh, not that one. I think you need to go back. There, there, there. If you see on the left, that is, that is the, the area behind the wall, and the wall retains that land, which is approximately, I would say, five or six feet above the level of the parking lot. So that, that serves that function.
Retains it from flooding or?
From falling into the parking lot.
Oh, oh, okay, I see.
From the earth moving into the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
So it is a retaining wall, and it does serve a structural function.
Okay. And is it because of the state of disrepair, is it in fact serving any functional purpose right now? Is it still able to do what we need it to do, or?
Yeah, because the, the base of it is still intact.
Okay.
But it is falling apart, but we're, yeah, but it, but, but it is in such a state of disrepair. I mean, we, we have looked at the idea of putting trees or something instead. But, but we're still dealing with a historic structure, and it would still need approval of SHPO to do any changes. So if we, if we don't get any money, then we'll go to Plan B. But right now, this is what the plan is.
Okay.
The park was built, what, in nineteen twenty seven?
Nineteen oh six.
Nineteen oh six, and that's original.
Yes.
So it's original, and it's, you can't Band-Aid it anymore, which is, you know, it's starting to bow.
Have we been doing that all along?
Yes.
In fact, if you recall, Ruby, show the next picture down. The ext, stop. The exterior of the bathhouse was in that kind of a condition. We, we had an estimate to do the repair. For example, we're, if you look at the windows, those are new windows that we got with our grants. And the original contract was to do the windows and the area around the windows, above, you see that ledge? That was the original contract, and the contractor found that the wall itself was in such disrepair, it was falling apart. So we had to do a separate, with taxpayer money, we had to redo the exterior of the bathhouse entirely. And we were able to use about eighty thousand dollars of leftover parks money from the, from the state to do that. But we had to put in, uh, the town of Rye and the city of Rye, another about, I don't remember the number, something around two hundred thousand dollars worth to do that.
I thought it all that, the past year.
Yeah, last year.
Last year.
It looks good.
Yeah, and hopefully the wall will look the same in about, less than a year.
Yeah. It's good to see when it's completed.
You know, a lot of work over the years has been done to the park, you know, and it, it gets to the point where you can't do repair anymore. You got, it's got to be replaced, you know, especially with this wall, because it's actually in sections, it's bowing. And the last thing you want to do is to collapse, it bow, it's bowing a little bit, and you don't want it to collapse.
Yeah.
You know.
Especially other people.
Yeah, so that's the reason why it's all, that's the reason why it's all fenced off, so in case anything happens, nobody's in that area.
All right. Any other questions on this project?
There are two Facebook comments. Do you want me to read them now or at the end about this project?
Well, we can read them. This is a public hearing, members of the public.
Okay. The first is why wasn't this done last fall or in the spring?
Why wasn't it done? Because there is no money to do it.
And then the.
Where this is, for, for whoever's comment, do you want to name the person?
Her name's Mary Ann.
All right, Mary Ann. We have been applying to do this, to do this work. This is obviously necessary. And as I just stated, we have made several applications. At some point, it might come to the, we might have the problem of having to fund it ourselves, but we feel very, very good that we will be getting grants and not have to use taxpayer money to do this. And we're looking, if, if the grants are approved, we're looking to do this work hopefully before the next beach season.
And then the second question is, when are the bathrooms going to be done, and that they've been horrible for years?
We agree. We have money to do some of the work. We have a grant of four hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars from the state to do the, the bathhouse interior. We have to match that with another four hundred and twenty seven thousand. We have applied to the county, and I have to credit our legislators, Nancy Barr and Catherine Parker, for adding that to the, to the capital budget. At the last legislative session that passed the budget, the amount was added in, and I can, I reported at the Rye Town Park Commission meeting last week that it had to go to the county planning board for approval, which it did and was approved. So now it'll go, it had to get that to get formally into the county budget, county capital budget. And now we're moving forward, talking with the planning department and the county executive's office to, to get this to the Board of Legislators for legislative approval to do the, to get that. And with, with those two grants, that would be almost nine hundred thousand dollars, which is about what our estimate is. And of course, I say this every time we apply and say what something's going to cost, we won't know the actual cost of the project until we bid it and get the, and receive the bids. That will determine the final cost, and hopefully we'll stay reasonably close to the estimate. Any other questions? Okay. Proceed.
So the second project is the sidewalk at Rye Town Park, the accessible path, rather. The park promenade is very difficult to navigate for people with disabilities, and it is not ADA compliant. The reason this condition exists is because erosion has worn away at the top layer of the crushed stone, which has exposed larger unstable stones underneath. The path is not slip resistant and is therefore not ADA compliant. And there's currently is a sidewalk present, but it is too short and it is crumbling. The proposed work for this project includes installing a four foot wide ADA compliant asphalt or concrete sidewalk, connecting existing ADA compliant walking surfaces to the north and the south, creating a continuous hardened and firm pedestrian route between Dearborn Avenue to the south and Playland Park Boardwalk to the north. And the same as the previous application, the max is two hundred thousand. But the current estimate for the construction alone is two hundred thousand, and that's without the soft cost, but once again, needs to be matched fifty fifty.
All right.
So the photos.
Do you have more photos? The one there on the bottom, the people on the left, that's the existing crumbling path, which is only located on the, the northern part of the, of the promenade, near the north gate and the snack bar. You have more pictures? That's it? Do you have the, the drawing?
Yeah.
All right, that is, that is the proposed pathway. And you can see that it goes from, on the left, you can see that is the, the ticket booth. And, yeah, where, where Ruby, point, point that again where you were, that, that is asphalt there. That, that continues in front of the tower building. And then the proposed path would go along the promenade, as you can see, all the way up to the north gate on the right. Yep.
So, so that's basically going to be from the pavilion, from the pavilions up, right, because everything to the.
No, the, yeah, the pavilions are.
They're, they're sound.
Well, the pavilions in, in front of the tower building are all, there's asphalt, walkway there. So that goes from the, from, basically from the ticket booth, which is that little square thing on the left. And then, and then you can see where Ruby's, that's the, that's the, the new ramp that moves to the right, that goes down to the beach.
Correct.
And the, the new pathway would go along the promenade on the, on the, on the, you know, seaside level and going all the way up to the north end.
Okay.
And the width of the new pathway, will it be that sidewalk?
Be five feet, five feet.
So it will actually be the entire pathway?
Yeah, well, no, 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 that, that pathway is like at least twelve feet wide, maybe more. You can see the relative dimensions. I mean, it's, it's only a small part of it.
But it's wider than it is now, it feels like. Felt like, when we saw the picture, it was a very slim strip.
Yeah, I think it will be wider than it is now. I, I don't have those numbers in, in front of me. And once again, we are applying not only to CDBG, we are applying through the CFA process as part of our application for the retaining wall. It also includes the application for the path. And it, the, the, the limit there, unlike CDBG, is not two hundred thousand dollars. I believe that's the parks limit is five hundred thousand. I'm not sure about that, but it's certainly, at least double, double what the CDBG is. And also, we've, we've applied to Senator Mayer's office. If we have funds that are not used on the retaining wall, they can also be applied to the path. Okay? Questions from the council?
Yeah, good question. In, in the package here, we have an estimate for a concrete sidewalk and an estimate for the, an asphalt sidewalk. How will it be determined which way to go?
Probably.
Concrete is eighty thousand dollars more.
Well, I, I think a lot of that may depend on how much of grant money we get. And it'll be, Randy, it'll, it will be bid in the alternative, so we will have a choice.
Is concrete considered to be preferable generally to asphalt?
Yeah, I would prefer the concrete if, if we had the choice. It's much longer lasting and probably looks better. The gray area, the gray concrete probably looks better in the promenade than the black asphalt would. And it would last longer.
That's why it's eighty thousand dollars more.
Who could pay more for, or for, poor footed friends who have the promenade?
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Are there any questions on this project on Facebook? Nope. Okay, who is on Zoom? Because I can't.
Stephanie. James and Dick.
James and Dick? Okay. James, do you have any comment, or are you good? James is our engineer who's currently on vacation.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gary, I didn't know you're, you're talking to me. Yes, I, I have no comment. I think Ruby did a great job presenting the project.
Thank you. Thank you on behalf of Ruby. Okay. Now, seeing no other questions, no members of the public being present in the room, may I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Snardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Selyer.
Yes.
And Counselperson Jaffe.
Did you forget me down here? I don't know who I am anymore. Yes.
Supervisor.
Yes. And Ruby, I want to thank you. This is your first presentation before the council, and you did a excellent job.
Stellar presentation, you joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have resolutions. Point two. Resolution authorizing the submittal of an application to Westchester County's Community Development Block Grant Program for the reconstruction of the Rye Town Park bathhouse retaining wall. I think we've kind of explored this whole thing already. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Hope, please call the roll.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Snardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Selyer.
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. The next resolution. Authorizing, submittal of an application to Westchester County's. Authorizing submission of an application to Westchester County's Community Development Block Grant Program for restoration of the park promenade sidewalk to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Axarad?
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi?
Yes.
Councilperson Salya?
Yes.
And councilperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I think Hope wants her regular spot back.
I'm so used to saying Salya. And I'm looking right at you.
Well, you could just have it written down and check people off. So, we, we have, um, the, the, uh, that application will be filed in August. And, uh, you know, obviously, we, we had a public hearing because it is required under, under federal law that we have a public hearing before the application is submitted. Our next resolution is a resolution authorizing Jeff Binder, our town attorney, uh, to retain him at a rate of two hundred and eighty dollars per hour for legal work relating to the prosecution of certain INREM foreclosure proceedings in the town of Rye. And, um, you know, in Jeff's, uh, res- resolution appointing him the town attorney, it specifies other litigation as well, but, uh, both he and I thought it would be good if we just specifically specified, uh, to do the INREM, uh, litigation. There are currently eight properties subject to INREM. Three of them are residential, the other five are commercial. I am specifically interested in commencing legal proceedings against three of the commercial properties. One of them owes a hundred and one thousand dollars. The other one, another one owes a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And the third owes a hundred and, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I have said many times before that we need to set funds aside for our taxpayers who are in arrears. These happen to be advanced. Each of them is a minimum of three years in arrears. But we have to set aside reserves for all arrears when we do our budgeting, which means that, that means it's less money available to the town for normal governmental purposes and serves to increase the tax rate on those residents who do pay their taxes timely. So we have adopted a program of aggressively, I hate to say going after, but aggressively trying to collect our tax arrears. And if you remember, at the last meeting, our controller advised that our arrears are only, right now, are about one percent, which is very good. It's the best it's ever been. But one of the reasons is that we have an aggressive policy of collecting our back taxes. So with that prelude, may I have a motion in a second?
Can I just, a quick question? You mentioned, I believe you said there were six commercial properties?
Yes.
And are the three that you didn't mention at a point where you're still hopeful of negotiation, where the amount is too low?
Yeah, we, this is the thinking, and I've mentioned this, I think, before. The law was changed last year for INREM foreclosures, so that, uh, we are limited in the amount of fees that can be recouped when we start a proceeding. Obviously, it costs a certain amount of money to instigate legal proceedings. So if the ultimate legal bill, for example, is ten thousand dollars to collect this money, it's one thing to co- to spend ten thousand dollars to collect a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, one of our properties owes sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars. The amount of time and effort that goes into collecting sixteen thousand dollars is not a lot different than the amount of time and effort going in to collect a hundred thousand or three hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand dollars. So we're going to start with the properties that owe the most money, and we will send notices to all of the other properties, and hopefully they, as well as the homeowners who are on arrears, will bring their arrears current without the need to file a legal petition in Supreme Court.
That, that makes perfect sense. Just remind us, what is the, there's a cap one week? And how's that calculated?
Two percent.
Two percent of the amount in controversy?
Yes.
And so the state legislature and its...
Infinite wisdom, as they say, or characteristic stupidity
has put a cap that makes many actions not economically viable.
Yeah, I mean, we could do it, but it's not economically viable. And if we're looking to save the taxpayer money, then to spend a large sum of money to collect a small sum of money doesn't make a lot of sense.
So they, they only get two percent of the bill that we spend?
On, on, no, no, on legal fees. In other words...
Yeah, on legal fees, that's all they pay?
On, on fees, yeah. It's two hundred and fifty dollars or two percent of the outstanding balance, whichever is greater.
In, in other words, that amount is assessed to the defendant?
Correct.
And anything on top of that, if you went that, would be paid for by the plaintiff, that is us?
That is correct.
Gary, just based on your comment that it would take the same amount of legal work or time to pursue an action for a small sum of money as opposed to a large sum of money, I realize that it would be totally case dependent, but do we have a sense of how many hours of legal work it generally takes, or how much we generally pay in legal fees to...
I can ask the attorney who's done the work.
I mean, as I said, taking into account that clearly it'd be case dependent.
If you will remember, uh, that was an item of controversy at the last general election.
Yes. So I, I think it's worth mentioning if, if it's something you're comfortable speaking on.
Speak at the microphone. By, by the way, just for the members of the public, we've had this discussion when we were doing the budget last year, and, uh, and Jeff had presented to the council what I think he's gonna probably say now.
All you have to do is remember what you said.
I have it on tape.
It is, it's really very difficult, because some properties have many lien holders. You know, when we do a title search, there could be many, many entities that, that have an interest in the property, that have recorded some sort of lien that need to be notified and then need to be interacted with. Some properties, it's just a single property owner that it could take a letter and a few phone calls, some emails back and forth to, that, that might result in, in full payment. My experience with these cases has been, most of them are very involved. Everyone has a particular, you know, circumstance as to why they haven't paid. And then I get very involved in them, and my objective is not to take the property. My objective is to get, is to collect the, the arrears. So my pattern in practice has been to work with people along the way. But that requires time and effort, and my office gets inundated with phone calls as soon as we send out our initial letter. It's, it's really very hard to tell you a specific amount on each case. You know, if we want to go back and look at my billings from the prior batches, that would probably inform proportionately how much time I'd spend on each case. You'd have to take my billings, aggregate them, and then divide them by the properties, but that doesn't mean, you know, one property took the same amount of time as another property. This, that's sort of a long way of answering, I really don't know yet. It's very, very circumstantial. It's, you know, each, each property owner has a particular, you know, story that I have to get into. And I try to work with them, and, but that, you know, that accrue time when that happens. But I think that that's a better result than actually taking someone's property.
No, a hundred percent. Do you know, um, I mean, do we have a statistic as to your success rate in settling or, or getting payment in lieu of having to go into foreclosure with the cases that you've already handled? Cause it seems like it's been...
Well, we haven't, we haven't taken a property in a long time, which I think, you know, or I think that that's telling to my efforts, right?
Yes.
But on the other side of the coin, I accumulated legal fees.
Oh, a hundred percent. No, I just think it's worth noting for people that might not keep track of things, that we have, um, had great success and not had to, you know, take properties and yet still have the debt collected to the benefit of all the other taxpayers who have been paying. So I just sort of wanted to put that on the record for people that don't know the inner workings or what goes on behind the scenes in the practice of law and the importance of settlement in lieu of, um, you know, going forward.
Well, I, I've practiced commercial litigation for forty-three years, and not surprisingly, clients often ask, what's it gonna cost? And the answer is, it depends. Because a lot of it is not in your control. It depends when, what the other side does, what you discover. For example, as you mentioned, if there are other lien holders involved, that means that the pro- the owner of the property in question has accumulated debts to a number of other interested parties. And who are, so a number of creditors, including the town, are fighting it out. So it depends, but, um, and unfortunately, uh, some people in, in commercial cases, um, are not going to pay even when they owe the money until they're absolutely pushed to the wall and don't have any alternative. Then they pay, and the fact that you haven't, or the town hasn't actually for- taken any properties, but has been active in collections, I think illustrates that. Because what, it's, and it's another way of saying, at the end of the day, almost everybody pays what they owe.
I, I, I'm hoping that, that my track record continues. The change in the law actually creates a little bit of a disincentive, unfortunately, to pay. Because now, if we get to the point where we have to take a property and sell it, the taxpayer, uh, gets the windfall, gets the delta between our taxes and the sale price. So that, as, as the town supervisor, I think, has explained on a number of occasions, this new law has created actually a little bit of a disincentive to settle up with the town, because at the end of the day, they'll get, they'll get, it's, it's as if we became their, their real estate agent.
Yeah, that, that, exactly. If they don't want to sell the property, we, we, we would auction it and then have to give the surplus back to the property owner.
So I'm not really...
If there is a surplus.
So it's really unclear how, how this is gonna play out during this round. I'm gonna do my best to, to collect for the town in advance of commencing, formally commencing an action. So, uh, I mean, I'll keep you posted, and I'm sure the town supervisor will keep you posted on how this works.
Yeah, well, we have the unique position of being fiduciary of the taxpayers' money. I mean, a private corporation can pursue, you know, commercial real estate however they want to, but I just feel like people might be asking these questions, and, you know, I would like to kind of be their representative so the information is there, on the record. You know, fortunately, I do know the work that you've done and the success that you've had, but I do think people would want to hear about that so they can understand where the fee structure comes in and the necessity for it, so.
One, one, one of the problems is once you go to court, I was with Jeff, and luckily it was on Zoom. We had filed an INREM petition against a commercial property owner on North Main Street. And they put in an answer. I mean, you know, some, sometimes you don't put in, they don't put in an answer, you go to judgment. They put in an answer, um, they fought it in court. They, uh, it was involved, the, with, uh, the ownership was involved with an estate. So it was a question of who had the authority to do anything. There were at least three Zoom sessions that I attended, as well as our attorney. Of course, they wanted to know, is there anything that could be done? And I had to be there to say, no, this is the position of the town, et cetera, et cetera. And I actively engaged. Of course, I didn't get paid, but Jeff got paid for it. And this went on and on. I would say that, that took close to a year to resolve.
My, my question, my question is, say we take over a property, do we add your fees onto the resale of that property when we go to auction it off? Is that our starting point? Like, whatever to back taxes plus a hundred percent of your, your time?
It used to be.
It used to, but still, two percent, still two percent?
Right.
Okay.
In fact, the, the change, the change was such that it almost didn't matter because the auction price far exceeded the, the tax and interest due. So that the town got a windfall, and obviously, whatever the attorney had charged. And also, when we sold the, the, uh, the property, we also paid, uh, for the, Jeff didn't handle it, Dan handled the auction. And so that all got wrapped up, and we, the town still came out ahead. That's no longer the case.
Yeah.
Jeff, what's the interest rate that gets added in if, if there's a default?
Well, the interest rate that accrues on the arrears is right now is twelve percent, but the state legislation reduced it to six.
They reduced it to six?
Yeah.
No, no, they, they reduced it to prime, which is a little higher. Yeah, that hasn't been signed yet, and as I mentioned at the last meeting, we're, we're fighting it.
Okay. It's, it's, it's on the governor's desk?
No, it isn't. It's not on the governor's desk yet. She's not gonna call for it probably till December. But the Association of Towns, NICOM, Association of Counties are all opposed to her signing that legislation. So we'll see where it goes.
If that, if that legislation is actually signed, there's a further disincentive to settle up with the town. Let's say you got the credit card bill that's twenty-five thousand, and then you have the town bill...
At a, at a thirty, at a thirty percent interest rate.
What are you gonna pay first?
Well, Hope knows, what, what is the, the interest rate changes? Hope is a prior receiver of taxes. Do, what is, what is the interest rate that we are charging currently?
Well, the lien gets transferred to the Westchester County, and then it's, uh, at twelve percent, and then it's one percent per month thereafter. So it's interest on top of the penalty, so every year that it, it, um, it's twenty-four percent and to be at thirty-six percent, and so homeowners did pay a high rate of interest. So it's, we, so it was, that was a windfall, well, well, if they paid their taxes.
And will the six percent be flat? Were you referring to that increases of one percent?
Every month it, it's, yeah.
But no, now it's being, it would be, or it's going to be capped at six percent, is that what you're saying?
Well, at prime, which is at about eight...
Oh, at prime, which is, okay.
Yeah, it was down at about eight percent, but it would be yearly.
Okay, each year, change.
So it's a, it's a disincentive for the taxpayer to pay their property tax rather than their credit card bill, or if their mortgage had reset or something like that, they would, they would, they would pay other things, which would have the effect of putting more properties actually INREM, because it would be building, and then we would have to, they would not be paying voluntarily, and then we would have to, uh, start court proceedings. So that, that's, I mean, as Jeff said, our goal is simply to collect the taxes. That's what we'd like to do. And if they pay on, if the taxpayer pays on time, there's no interest. It's as simple as that. So, any other questions?
Nope.
May I have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Hope, please call the roll.
Councilperson Axarad?
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi?
Yes.
Councilperson... Councilperson Salya?
Yes.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And now, we have an executive session to discuss a specific personnel matter. We will not be coming back into public session. There will be no resolutions passed on this matter. And so, I'd like a motion and a second to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in executive session. Thank you.